To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a creation and justice for all.
Okay, there's two items that have been postponed, so if you're here for them, they won't be heard tonight. The first is the 275 North Middletown Road Internal Commercial Subdivision Plan, PB number seventeen dash thirty-five. It will not be heard tonight. The second is the South Corner Plaza Site Plan, PB number seventeen dash thirty-seven. It will also not be heard tonight.
The first one, 275 North Middletown Road, will be heard on the twenty-sixth.
Sorry, it'll be heard on the twenty-sixth, which is the next meeting.
Next meeting. And the last one will be heard in the year.
Yeah, and then we have no meetings in August. So the first item that's up is Wyeth Holdings LLC Site Plan, PB number seventeen dash thirty-four. They're here for pre-preliminary, preliminary, and final.
As I look up, the sun will brighten my eyes, and I see red spots. It's almost gone. It's almost gone.
So would you please sign in and state your name and your affiliation with the project for the record?
Yes, Mr. Garvey, my name is Brian Quinn. I'm the attorney for the applicant. My office is at sixty-seven North Main Street, New City, New York.
I am Christopher Clark. I'm representing the applicant.
What's your name?
Christopher Clark.
Thank you.
And I am Gary Herta. I am the engineer of record on the project.
Herta, H-U-R-T-A.
What's the firm?
I'm sorry, Golda Associates, Inc.
Okay, Mr. Quinn.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Garvey, members of the planning board. This is an application by Wyeth Holdings. They still do own some property over there. You may recall that a portion of the Pfizer campus has been sold to IRG. This is part of the undeveloped property that would lie adjacent to it on the other side of the railroad tracks. The application covers a number of things. To break it down, there'll be a security fence that's going to be put in place. There will be some repair to an existing intermittent stream to prevent further erosion. There will be a repair of the cap for an existing landfill, and some work that will be done in connection with what they call leachate coming off of the site. It's a rather steep slope, so there's rainwater, perhaps some groundwater mixed in there. It's currently going through some pipes, and I'm going to let the engineer do a little more explaining of all of that to you. There is a narrative summary contained in your package which covers all of the items. Would you like to have Mr. Golda go through this?
Who's in the audience that wants to, who's listening to this? So come up, then yes. Go ahead, explain everything that you're doing.
Okay, just to orient everybody where these sites are located, this is Route fifty-nine over here. This is North Middletown Road.
You have to sit down, yes.
This is North Middletown Road. This is the IRG Pearl River Campus over here. West of that campus is the New Jersey Transit Line, and then just west of this are two parcels that are currently owned by Wyeth Holdings. The majority of the work is being done on a parcel that's located within the town of Orange Town. Just these two parcels, a portion of these two parcels have been used for disposal of debris and trash from the facility since nineteen forty-six until about nineteen ninety-six. And what we're here today is talking about some improvements and some maintenance that will be done to the landfills. As Mr. Quinn mentioned earlier, the work can be broken down into three different components. One of them is related to the leachate management system at the site. The second is repairs to landfill two A, and the third is the security fence, security enhancements to the site. To give you an idea what we're doing for the landfill, for the leachate management systems, disposed landfill three A currently has a leachate collection system. The leachate flows from the landfill to a five-thousand-gallon underground storage tank. From the underground storage tank, it flows to a pump station, and from the pump station it flows via a double-contained pipe to the IRG Pearl River Campus, where it's introduced into their industrial wastewater treatment plant, where it passes through and then is discharged to the town of Orange Town sewer system. What Wyeth Holdings is proposing to do is to remove that five-thousand-gallon leachate holding tank that's there right now, replace it with a larger twenty-two-thousand-gallon underground storage tank, that'll be double, double-walled storage tank, and then turn that into a pump station. So that pump station will continue to discharge into the same force main and discharge the leachate onto the, to the IRG property of the industrial wastewater treatment facility. At landfill two A, which is north of landfill three A, the current system, the leachate's collected from the landfill and is stored in the leachate holding tank. Currently, periodically, a truck has to go out there, a tanker truck needs to go to the site and pump the leachate from the storage tank, and then it has to haul the leachate in the access road to the industrial wastewater treatment plant, where it passes through the wastewater treatment plant and is discharged to the, to the town sewer system. What is currently being proposed is to extend the force main, the dual-contained force main from landfill three A back to landfill two A, and then to convert the existing five-thousand-gallon precast concrete holding tank into a pump station, so they can eliminate the need to bring a tanker truck periodically up to the site and haul it over to the industrial wastewater treatment facility. So it's basically an improvement over existing conditions, eliminating that step. Obviously, people are aware that Wyeth Holdings doesn't have as great a presence at the site anymore, and because of this, it is seen as an improvement. We're reducing energy usage, reducing the carbon footprint associated with these operations by automating the operation of the leachate discharge, which currently goes on. The second item that's included are the maintenance improvements, the landfill two A. On the south side of landfill two A, you probably can't see it, there's an unnamed intermittent stream that flows past the landfill. Over time, the, the stream has eroded the embankment adjacent to the landfill, and one of the activities that's being proposed is to repair the area that's been eroded. It's about a twenty-five-foot-length section, provide erosion protection, and then also provide erosion protection about fifty feet downstream of that, to prevent that from continuing to erode and continuing to degrade the quality of this stream as it goes by due to sediment being present in the water. The other maintenance activity that's going to be done at landfill two A is there's a lot of invasive vegetation that's on the landfill cover system right now, so we're proposing to eliminate the invasive vegetation that's on the landfill cover system, to repair some depressions that affect the landfill over time, and then to re-vegetate the landfill with a grass surface, to make it easier to inspect over time. Right now, it's a challenge to get back there. The final item that's, that's being proposed is to install approximately seventy-six-hundred feet, linear feet, of secondary security fence around the landfills. This feet will be roughly six, will be six feet tall, and it'll have three barbed wire strands on top. And this, this, this fence is being installed on this property, because as I mentioned, there's less of a Wyeth Holdings presence on the site. There aren't as many people out there as often, and with the installation of this new equipment, we want to make sure that, that we keep unauthorized people from entering the site. Over the past several years, there's certainly been signs of people trespassing on the property, and with the new equipment, we want to make sure that these, the new equipment doesn't become damaged. So in all, these are, these are improvements and maintenance items that Wyeth Holdings is doing voluntarily. They, they feel these are enhancements to the, to the existing site, and in the long term, they should have an overall improvement in the environment.
Just an important note, given the size of the piece of property involved, it's approximately one hundred and ten acres. There were a lot of neighbors that were notified of this, you know, pursuant to the town regulations, and I just wanted to add that there is, other than as described by Gary, there is no development of the site proposed, there's no rezoning of the site proposed, there's no sale of the site proposed. It's purely just really improvements and enhancements to the existing conditions that are at the site right now.
Okay, thank you. So, no, it's not the time for, I will, okay, so if this is your first time at a planning board meeting, which it obviously is, we let them speak, I read the, the comments into the record, the members speak, comment on it, ask questions, and then I let the public speak. I will let you know when that happens. Okay, so also, I don't read all of the comments, if they're technical. If any of the members want me to read the comments, or if the attorney or somebody else thinks it's apropos or should be mentioned, then I will. The PRC has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by other agencies for this project from the Office of Building Zoning and Planning, John Giordella. He has five. These comments are all available in the back for anybody to read. From Bruce Peters, he has ten. Booker Engineering sent a letter on June thirtieth, but there's an updated letter on July eleventh, so I'll read that. "This is our second drainage review report for this portion of the Pfizer-Wyeth property. Our last was dated June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. This application is for work at the two landfills located west of the main campus. The proposed work includes new pump stations, force mains, and fences that are needed for the ongoing monitoring of the existing closed landfills. No stormwater detention facilities are proposed. The revised information submitted demonstrates a reduction in gravel and impervious areas of sixteen thousand forty-four square feet. Approximately two acres of woods are being removed and replaced with meadow open space. There is an overall reduction in the weighted curve number and no net increase in peak runoff rates. A tributary to the muddy brook flows east between the landfills. Channel bank stabilization is proposed along with crossings of the stream for a new force and, excuse me, for a new force main and fence. The muddy creek is not a mapped FEMA floodplain at this location on the property. A hydraulic and hyd, hydrologic and hydraulic analysis of the unnamed tributary has been, unnamed tributary has been provided for the most recent submission that shows a one-hundred-year flood, flow depth of two feet at the fence crossing." There's three comments, and the final is, "We therefore recommend that the Wyeth Holdings LLC Site Plan maintenance improvements to closed landfill be approved for drainage subject to the above three comments," as I mentioned. Rocket County Department of Planning has six. Any issues, Mr. Quinn?
No.
Rocket County Highway. "Proposed action should have a de minimis impact upon the county highway, and a work permit will not be required." From the Rocket County Department of Health. "No Rocket County Department of Health approvals needed." Rocket County Drainage. "The above referenced parcel is within the jurisdiction of the RCDA. However, the current proposal does not appear to result any obstruction to the flow of floodwater and will have minimal or no site disturbance and/or increase in impervious airfall. Therefore, a permit from the RCDA pursuant to the Rocket County Stream Control Act is not requested. However, please be advised that any future improvements to this site will require a permit or a determination otherwise from the RCDA." They also say they don't have objection to this board serving as lead agency. Rocket County Sewer has four comments. New York State of Environmental Conservation. The solid waste one?
Yeah.
"Upgrades to closed landfill fills three A and two A, which are necessary to bring the facility into compliance with the accepted operation and maintenance manual, require written approval by the Division of Materials Management. New development may require modification to the landfill closure plan. Please send narratives and plans to date Pollock at this office for approval." And there are other comments. Town of Clarkstown. They do not object to us serving as lead agency. And they have three comments.
Yes, they're fine.
Rock, New York State Parks Recreation Historic Preservation. They have no concerns regarding the project under SECRA. And then there's correspondence from the Rocket County Department of Health and Orange Town ZBA. And the New York State Department of Transportation not objecting to this board serving as lead agency. Cheryl, that's all I have. Yes. Okay. Mr. Young?
I see this is a site remediation-type project right now. The distance between three A and two A for the pipe that you're going to install?
It's about one, the distance is approximately one thousand four hundred and seventy feet.
About a quarter of a mile. Tank, the fifty-five, five-thousand-gallon tank will remain in service while the twenty-two is put in place, or are you pulling the five-thousand out, capping and?
We are pulling the five-thousand-gallon tank out. We're removing that and putting the twenty-two-thousand-gallon tank in its place.
Do you need to maintain the system during that outage, I'll call?
Yes, we will provide temporary pumping during that time.
Temporary pumping, okay. And Clarkstown, Clarkstown, their only request was the fencing to be placed away from the easement?
Yes, and they also had the request for, for the tree removal and getting the appropriate permits for the tree removal.
Send the tree removal plan, right?
Yes.
That's what they asked for.
Mr. Young, we're fine with moving the fence to comply with their request.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Dell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I think we should note for the record that this seems to be a minimum of five hundred feet from any residential properties. It's also in a campus-type setting where the primary person, primary group being influenced by this development is the applicant. Now that being said, we know these, as you said, these landfills go back decades and decades, and you're talking about leachate. Has any analysis been done on this leachate to find out if there's anything unusual in it?
Yes, there are samples of leachate that are collected quarterly and submitted to the New York State DEC.
Yeah, I would like to see that myself, particularly with any heavy metals or anything else like that that might be in there. Was there anything atypical in that study?
No, the, the leachate data have shown that it has very low concentrations of metals and very low concentrations of volatile and semi-volatile organic compounds.
All right, well, again, I would certainly like to see that. The other question is that the extent of site disturbance, I know Clarkstown referred to it, I certainly would like to know. If there was some delineation here as to what you're saving and what's being removed and disturbed, I think that would be helpful.
Are you referring to the tree removal along the fence?
Yeah, the, the entire area that you're going through. Obviously, you're putting in a thousand-feet of pipe. We assume that's going to be minimal disturbance when you do that, but we don't know what's going to be happening around some of the other areas. Are you clearing anything else? It should be delineated on here, so at least we have some sort of a, a record on the, on the plants.
The area disturbance is being put on the plants, right? Yes, we, we have indicated the limits of disturbance on the stormwater pollution prevention plan that was submitted with the document.
Well, this is the one plan that was in my files. Is there another one missing?
There was also the stormwater pollution prevention plan was submitted part of the application.
Yeah, well, that's, I don't think that was in my set. I got this, and I got another one. Do you have that, Mr. Young?
I do not.
Okay. The other question is, you're talking about removing, the elimination of the invasive species. How do you intend to do that?
We are going to be doing that, we're going to be preparing a plan to do that work, and that plan's going to be submitted to the New York State DEC for their approval.
All right, so it will involve herbicides, or will involve other types of mechanical cleaning?
It will probably involve both.
All right.
Both herbicides and, and mechanical removal.
And again, I'd feel a little bit more comfortable if I could see that, just to, just to check.
Mr. Dell, I, actually, in reading through the application, what was submitted, it caused me to do a little research on my own, because there's reference to invasive phragmites, which I've learned are, you may be familiar with it.
Yes.
I know you have some background. I understand they're very difficult to remove, the root system is, takes a lot of work, so all of that removal will be done in compliance with all town, state, county regulations, and it has to be submitted to the DEC for review and approval.
All right, well, that I could certainly understand. I know there's quite a bit of work in that, but my other question about the leachate analysis, I'd like to see the actual data on that, and I would like to also see the amount of site disturbance in specifics that you're planning on here. It doesn't seem like much of a, much of an effort is needed to do this. I'm not opposed to what you're doing. It sounds like it could be an improvement, but again, there's some information, I feel, that I would like to see to feel more comfortable about it. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Mr. Bond?
God, it seems pretty straightforward what they're looking to do and stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Mr. Warren?
I kind of agree with Mr. Bond and with, with Dell, has a question, I think that's a good point.
Okay.
Just two quick questions. One, just because you said you have a minimal presence on the property, so I was wondering, what is the impetus for this project? Why take it on at all?
To get into compliance.
Make sure we remain in compliance.
Okay.
Regulations change, and, you know, for example, the, the stream required repairs because of erosion, so we want to fix the, the stream bed. I shouldn't start. Let the engineers.
Certainly, one of the, one of the main reasons why this work gets done is just, just because of the, the need to periodically get a tanker truck out there and empty the tank at landfill two A, then haul it all the way over to the IRG Pearl River Campus property. That, and, you know, certainly, we want to make landfill two A so that it would be more readily easy to, to inspect it, and then as Mr. Quinn mentioned, also want to make that, that stream bank repaired before it becomes a, a larger repair in the future.
So I'm hearing basically, it's, you know, twofold, one, to automate the process, and two, to kind of comply with the DEC's first comment about being in compliance with the operations. Okay. Second question was, the six-foot fence, the three rows of barbed wire, can you explain again why that's necessary for this kind of remote area?
There have been some signs of people trespassing on the property, and now that, that we are installing additional equipment out there, we just want to have additional assurance that there won't be people trespassing and potentially damaging the equipment that's going to be installed.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Mandell?
Yes, where specifically is the clearing of the two acres going to occur? Because it doesn't show it on here. Where's the two acres of trees going to be taken down?
And we will certainly, I believe what I showed in your plan, there is an area that's highlighted in yellow, and it has the, the symbol here that we've included here for a fence, it's a red line.
Yeah.
The, the tree clearing will primarily include, include removal of trees along this twenty-foot-wide strip. The, the fence will be in the center, and then there'll be, the, the trees will be cleared, and the brush will be cleared ten feet on either side to provide additional security. We don't want to have trees that are, that are right next to the fence, so we can just climb up the tree and get over the fence. And, and also, we have some concerns that, you know, branches or trees might fall on it, and by providing a little bit of separation, it might minimize the potential for damage to the fence in the future, and also prevent, you know, making easy access for, for people who might be looking to trespass on the property. So, so it is this area that, that should be highlighted in yellow on your drawing. It's linked, and on the legend of your drawing, it should be labeled as "Limits of Clearing Along Fence Alignment."
Here, this is the distances, so that twenty feet's going to total up to about two acres total?
That's correct.
Okay, that's it, this clearing along the fence line.
Well, there will be clearing along the fence line, plus, there will be some clearing that'll need to be done for the installation of the force main.
Okay.
Because there, there is some vegetation along the fence, the, the new force main alignment, and then there's also some vegetation that will be removed in tying the new pump station into the, into the, the new force main.
Okay, that's all within the, the area, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And, and, you know, the, the total limits of disturbance, just so everyone knows, for the project was approximately seven-point-three-five acres. The, the landfill-related work is about three-point-nine acres, and the fence is roughly, you know, just, just under three-point-five acres for total disturbance. That also includes portions over here, which is along the, the east side of, of this property, and there's mostly, you know, just grass and other shrub vegetation that is present.
And so by the railroad, in other words?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mandell?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell. Okay, so is there anybody in the audience who would like to ask questions or come speak to this? Okay, so you'll come up to the mic, you'll state your name and your record, your address, I'm sorry for the record. You'll have, sorry. Hold on, wait a minute, I'm not done with my instructions. You'll have three minutes, that's the way we do it. There's a lot of people who want to speak tonight, the meeting's going to be very long, so we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. And address the board. We'll answer the questions that we can. If we feel that the applicant can answer the questions, we'll ask them to, but you're to address us directly.
Okay, my name is Vincent Kissel, and I live at one thirty-nine Gatto Lane, which is one of the closest properties to the site. That is K-I-S-S-E-L. Thank you. First question pertains directly about, to this project. You're talking about herbicides and pesticides.
Vincent, write to us.
You're talking about herbicides and pesticide. Is it possible to, to make sure that those are utilized on a date that's not very windy, on a day where you don't have winds blowing toward the west right into Gatto Lane? Because we have had, people living on Gatto Lane for forty years have had occasional odors that came from the project. That has really been reduced a lot, I guess it's because of the size of the Pfizer projects these days, but we always had odor problems for years, which has been dissipated, it really has gone down, and we're just concerned that there'll be odors as well as the pesticide in the air, or herbicides in the air, coming to the neighborhood. That'd be one question.
Okay, anything else?
Yes. The second one pertains to the property per se, and the deeds to the property. The very first deed to the property is inaccurate. The very first deed, libor five oh six, five oh five, page three eighty-one, applies to a property called Vreelandanacola property, which Pfizer, letterly, or Wyeth no longer own. I could show you on the map where it is, if you would like, but that shouldn't have been included in their, on their report or their, their proposal, because it's not their property, and it doesn't pertain to any of this. So when I saw that initially, I said, what else is wrong if they're putting a piece of property that they no longer own, and it's not part of this project? A third thing, a part of their project toward the western section, over the lower southwestern section, you have designated on maps, zoning maps, as R forty. That is inaccurate. It's L-I or L-O. It's not R forty. Somebody made a transcriptional error. That Vreelandanacola property that I was talking about, that's R forty. It's north of this property, and yet, on the maps in the building department, they show it as R forty. I spoke to Ms. Bard, Ms. Cooper Smith, and she said there was no indication that there was any of her change. She couldn't find anything. So I think that this was done in error, and I think it's something that should be ameliorated to be fixed, because in the future, somebody's going to see this as an R forty property when it never really became an R forty property. The property to the north of it, the Vreeland and Nicola, isn't designated by any number. That's R40. So the R40 was moved down to an improper part of the property.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
My name is Jane Moran. M is in Mary, I-R-A-N, and I live at 133 Gatto Lane.
Thank you.
All right. I wanted to know what the distance is to the western edge of the property. How far is this from Gatto Lane, that this is being done? And I wanted to know whether there'll be any noise from this pump station that you're putting in? Whether or not that will be a problem for us as well? What Mr. Kissel said about noise, smells, in the past, we also had quite a lot of noise in the past when the plant was in full operation. And the fence, is it going to be directly around the landfill? Or is this around more of the property, and how far will that be from the houses on Gatto Lane? And my last question is, when does the site work get done? It will all be done, I hope, during regular business hours and not extending into weekends when we can hear all of that stuff. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, good evening. Heather Hurley, 202 Hobart Street in Pearl River. I just had a couple of questions. One, who exactly is using the 22,000-gallon storage tank? And are there companies that are currently on IRG property that will be dumping, like, directly into that? If they could answer that. And that includes Urban Electric Power or Enelitech. I was wondering why the storage tank needs to be increased by four times the size? Is that per DEC regulations, or what's the reason behind that? What companies currently on the campus will be using it? What contaminants have been already identified? Has there been any independent baseline soil testing around the site? And also, will there be any air monitors on the property during the duration of construction to monitor if any elevated levels of toxins are released during the project's construction? And I just wanted to see if maybe Mr. Magrino could clarify about the notification laws. Isn't a project this size required to have 500 feet from the property to be notified? It's 200 feet, but isn't it 500 feet?
Is there anything else, Mrs. Hurley, while he's looking it up?
And if that's the case, then shouldn't an approval or not be given? Or it should be a continuance meeting, so that if that's the case, that the remaining properties be notified? And especially in the summertime when people are away? Just want to see if I have anything else. No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Quinn, you're, is there anybody else? Oh, I'm sorry. Come in. I'm sorry.
Christine O'Connor, 131 Gatto Lane. OCO and N O R. 131. 131 Gatto. G-A-T-T-O. I just looked at the map also, and I'm just a little confused. What streets are they actually saying that this work is going to get done? I know they're saying the landfill 2A. What streets do they correlate to? Does it back up to Gatto Lane? Is it down on the other end of Crooked Hill Road? I'm just confused and taking down the trees. What exact streets will that affect? That's my question.
Okay. Thank you. Next. Okay. Mr. Quinn, you have the question, so you can answer the questions that were asked to the best of your ability.
Okay. Was that the extent of all the public comment?
I believe that's it.
Okay.
I don't see anybody else.
I'm going to try to answer the easy ones, and I may have to ask Gary to do some of the engineering ones.
Okay.
But, yeah, I did take some notes here. How far from Gatto Lane? Gary, could you estimate how far? Because there was a question about the noise potentially from the pumps. Are they not in the tanks, so that these are?
Yeah, right here.
Can I have them, please? Thank you. Yep. Thank you.
Are the pumps contained in the tanks themselves? And they're underground, right?
They're scaling it off. Looks like the work will, the fence clearing, which is the closest work that'll be done, will be done within about 800 feet of Gatto Lane. And then, the other streets, it'll be done within about 500 feet of the, of the, of these properties. The properties that are recently applied, the Wyatt Holdings property, the closest, it looks like the fence will come to the backside of those properties at roughly 300 feet.
Okay. And there was a question about pump sta, the pump station noise. Gary, are these pumps contained within the tanks, which are buried underground?
Yes. These are just small horsepower, one and a half horsepower electric pumps. There won't be noise associated with this. Work will be limited to business hours, Monday through Friday. There won't be many work done on the weekends or the evenings. So there shouldn't be noise associated with that. And probably, the only noise that people would likely hear from these activities is when the 20-foot clearing is done along the fence alignment. There will be some noise associated with that.
Yes. The town has regulations with respect to hours of operation for conducting work, and obviously, we have to remain within those regulations. So they will be within work hours. I'm sorry. Okay. I think Ms. Hurley had some questions about who will be using the 22,000-gallon tank. Gary, this tank will be used solely for the leachate coming off of this field. Nobody else will be utilizing this tank. Is that correct? Okay. Why is the tank being increased in size? Could you just explain and answer that question, please?
We are looking to increase the size to provide approximately two days of storage capacity, so that if there needs to be maintenance done out there, we have at least two days under maximum flow conditions for us to make the necessary repairs.
With respect to Mr. Kissel's questions, use of herbicides on non-windy days. Obviously, we have to use any herbicides. I don't believe there are any pesticides being used. Is that correct? Only herbicides? And they have to be used in compliance with all applicable regulations. And all of that needs to be approved by the DEC. I can't comment on whether the deed was incorrect or if there's a mistake in the zoning maps for the town. I don't really think it affects this project, though. I believe Ms. Hurley asked if there was baseline soil tests available. I don't think there was any that have been done recently. The landfills, again, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong. The landfills were closed in compliance with all applicable regulations, and they are subject to monitoring by the DEC. The work that's being performed is basically preventive medicine to make sure that this stuff stays in compliance with all applicable regulations. The regulations, as you probably know, stormwater regulations, change and usually become more stringent as time goes by. So this is work that was just felt to be necessary. It's being done voluntarily by Pfizer, Wyeth. Okay. I believe Ms. Christine O'Connor asked what streets are affected. And I believe Mr. Dell's comment may be very appropriate. This isn't a campus setting. It's in the middle of a 110-acre parcel. Gatto Lane would be the closest. But I believe Gary has also explained that this is at least 300 feet from the nearest house on Gatto Lane. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think I've answered all of the questions that were posed.
Okay. So I need a motion to propose a, okay, sorry. Are you going to have any type of standby power?
No. No plans for standby power or generators at the facility.
Yes. Ms. Hurley asked me about the notification that's in section, sorry, 21A 14-1. Generally speaking, it's 200 feet, as you indicated. There is a provision for 500 feet notification under 10 circumstances. When it's high transmission lines, railroad and bus terminals, I won't go through all 10. But I believe the one you're referring to is the last one, which was, or may have been referring to, was sand pits, gravel pits, and topsoil landfill and excavation operations, all of which are not in accordance with the construction of buildings, structures, or roads. I was discussing it with John in terms of interpretation. They are putting in structures, meaning the pump station and things of that nature. So, you know, he's making one of the final calls of his tenure here in calling that a, in saying 10 doesn't apply. So to answer your question, it would be the 200 feet.
Thank you.
Mr. Garvey, if I might. I'm sorry.
Mr. Quinn, you've been here before. What's?
Okay, because I just remembered there was a question that we supplied tests that are done quarterly. We have no problem with doing that, if we can make it a condition. The tests, obviously, if there was anything that was negative or a problem, we would have been told by the DEC on this. But we'll be happy to supply, you know, 12 months' worth of testing, the most recent copies of that.
I'd like to keep.
Yeah, I know about you.
What else? Well, thank you. So. So I need a motion for lead agency. Mr. Warren makes the motion. I need a second. Mr. Sweeney, seconds. All in five, in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I need a motion for negative deck. Mr. Young makes the motion for negative deck. Mr. Bond, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
And I need a motion for final with conditions.
Final with conditions.
Mr. Warren makes a motion for final with conditions. Mr. Giudella, five. Mr. Peters, ten. Brooks, three. Rocket County Planning, three. Five, six.
Are you going to Clarkstown for the fence?
We're going to have to go there, I believe, for the tree clearing. But no site plan is required. Yeah, whatever they require on their property, we will need to do. Yes.
Thank you.
Rocket County Sewer, four. And New York State DEC, especially number one, which I read. Clarkstown has three, which you said you don't object to.
That's correct.
And then, the correspondence about the lead agency. And Mr. Quinn indicated that he'll be providing test samples to the buildings department for publishing. You, is that right, Mr. Quinn? Did I say that right?
Yes, I think I said 12 months. Is that sufficient?
I just also want to say, for the record, I'm very impressed with the work that your engineer did. It's one of the best that I've seen come to us. And it's, I don't think you could have done a better job orienting the public on how this project is going to go. Not to say that people aren't going to be upset or not upset, but as far as an explanation, I thought it was very well.
Thank you, Mr. Garvey.
Okay. So I need a second. Mr. Young, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm just going to, there's a lot of people here. I'm not sure if anyone came in late. But if you did, I just want to let you know that the Morton Milltown Road Terminal Commercial Subdivision Plan, number 17-35, has been postponed for the following meeting on July 26. And also, the South Corner Plaza Site Planner has proposed a, there's no indication of like that would be heard. Okay. We ask that you take whatever conditions you have outside because we still have two more applications to hear. So next up is Hawks View Subdivision. Review of lot 22.4, cover 17-36. They're here for a critical environmental area. Once again, we ask the people in the back to take it outside. Thank you. Could you please state your name and add your affiliation with the project to the record?
Jay Greenwell, Lance of Air.
Robert Hone, architect.
Sean Keenan, applicant.
Mic is off. Can you hear me now? Okay. Mr. Greenwell, what's up? You've been here a couple of times. Where are we with this?
We got final approval for the four-lot subdivision. We met all the conditions, and we're here for the southernmost lot. Because it's in a critical environmental area, each lot has to come before the board for a review and public hearing.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Hello? Mr. Quinn? Mr. Quinn, take them outside. Okay. So, okay. So the PRC has no additional comments. Mr. Giudella has three. Jay says that he's amended the site plan to show the setback.
Right.
Department Environmental Management, this is Bruce Peters. He has five.
No objection.
Brooker, engineering. The application has provided sufficient information to demonstrate the potential significant adverse impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Hawks View Site Plan for Lot 22.4 be approved for drainage, subject to no conditions. Wait a minute. So no conditions, but they have five comments.
And we have no objection to the comments. We will address them.
That's odd, right?
It's probably a typo.
Okay. We'll have to get Kenneth to stop rubber standing.
He was on his way to vacation.
Okay. Yeah, we haven't seen him because. Rocket County Planning has seven. Any issues?
No.
Dear God. I don't know if I want to move forward. I'm having a heart attack. Rocket County Highway, five. I mean, it is what it is.
It is. No objection.
Rocket County Health. You have to resubmit the SDS plans for approval.
We did, and a later letter in your package indicates that approval.
All righty. Rocket County Sewer doesn't object to us serving as lead agency, has no future comments. Rocket County Health, is that the one you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay. So the one, disregard the one I just read. This is the one from July 3rd. Five.
No objection. Those are conditions of the approval that they indicated.
Okay. And then, correspondence from Health, Highway, and Orange Town ZBA not objecting to this board serving as lead agency. Cheryl, is that it? Cheryl, is that it? I'm sorry, where is that? The email?
It was right after the letter from the Health Department.
They have no comments. All right. Thank you, Mr. Beers. That's all I have, Cheryl. Okay. Mr. Young?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Beefed up the dry wells on this to death, I'll say.
We did.
It's good in the driveway, I see that with the trench. How about that property dispute that was?
That was, yeah, that's what happened.
That corner, I see the shed is removed, that little piece of the driveway is still there on the padam. Have we come to some amicable agreement, or is this still?
The, as far as we're concerned, this is the property line, and.
You're moving forward.
We're moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, I mentioned this to Jay at PRC. I guess the patio is still there, right?
Patio is still there.
You should really show it on the plan, say, "to be removed."
We did show it on the subdivision.
On the subdivision, right, but just so it's clear, show it "to be removed," and I'll put the same condition, or ask that you put the same condition in that was in on subdivision approval, that if a court of competent jurisdiction, you know, changes the lot line, then this is for nought, really.
Okay.
There's a condition in there on the subdivision approval, so we should carry that forward.
Okay.
That's fair, Mr. Magrino. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Dell?
Yes, obviously, you spent a lot of work on this, and a lot of things seem to be very nice about it. You are showing encroachment of the silt fence onto Lot 2, but I think it should be stated for the record that the applicant owns Lot 2. Is that correct?
Andy's here tonight.
Okay. In the future, for the rest of these lots, I think it'll be a lot less confusing if you use maybe a 1-inch equals 10 scale in places, because it's a little hard to discern what you have, but I'm able to figure it out. Now, the trees I have in question, as you're removing, on the extreme downslope side, outside of your silt fence, you're removing two trees. Is there any reason for that?
Yes.
Now, I don't mean the one by the well.
No, I see the ones you're talking about. There, at the property land, is an 8-inch oak and 11-inch maple, looks like. Those the ones you're speaking of?
Yes.
Yeah, the applicant would like to, is providing a very substantial landscaping plan that's going to be reviewed by Akabor, and they want to obviously capitalize on the view while spending an enormous amount of money on this new landscaping that's going to be tiered and attractive and all-new, instead of being scrubby and not very attractive. So, obviously, it's all about the view, and that's why those were proposed to be removed.
Okay, one minor improvement I think you can make on it is to put hay bales with the staked fence on the downslope side. I know it's a belt and suspenders approach, but I think it could help preserve the area. When you're going to be doing that landscaping, are you going to be into, are you going to be on the downslope side of that silt fence area, or primarily above it?
We may be below it, but if we are, we would relocate the silt fence to where the landscape area would be limited to.
All right. Again, it's a rather small lot. You seem to have done a good job, from my view, designing it. I think if you have the staked hay bales, at least, that's an improvement. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
You have any objections to that?
No.
No. Mr. Bond? Thank you. Mr. Warren? Ms. Sweeney? Mr. Mandell?
What's going on with that property line? Is that currently in litigation, or there's no litigation?
No.
There's nothing?
Not to our knowledge. There's been no action taken by the.
Mr. Mandell, you were here when that was all going on, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was here, but they didn't ask that question. Is litigation currently in process?
I'm just asking. Because I remember.
Question wasn't clear. The perk test, have you performed them yet?
No, there's a note that Bruce Peters has that we have to provide that.
When are they going to be performed?
Well, there's a little bit of a catch-22, because in order to do the perk test, we have to take down some trees and put in the silt fence. Bruce's condition is no building permit until you give the perk test and put up the silt fence. So, hopefully, after tonight and after we go to Akabor, we can get approval to take down the trees, put in the silt fence, and do the test pit, and then get the next step. It's a little bit of an awkward scenario.
Yeah, I was just hoping that the perk test won't be done in November, December, when there's no rain and.
Oh, no, we, well, we're hoping to get Akabor approval next week. We're on for a public hearing on the 20th.
So, if that's the case, and when, if you get everything that you would need, then when will you do the perk test?
Soon as possible. I'd like to move, I'd like to cut the trees and move a machine in there.
Is that like August?
At least.
Soon as I get to go there. I'm ready to start building, so.
Okay, so, Mr. Mandell, has that satisfied you?
That's fine, August is good.
As long as it's not November and December, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's correct, but it doesn't.
So, that's the case, and then, I think that, I don't want to speak for Mr. Mandell, but having seen what he said before, so if you don't get, if you don't get these approvals, then you're going to have to wait for the perk test until next spring. We're not going to let you do them during the winter, okay? So, that's.
Understood.
Okay, so, and if there's an issue with that, you're going to have to come back.
How many trees do you have to remove to do the perk test?
Two.
Probably it is. Majority of them. Majority of them.
Because the problem is, you have to be final before you can go in there and do the work.
No, he means final. Well, we're hoping to get final this evening, and then go to Akabor next.
I'm not going to go in and do the work before I get the Akabor approval.
No, I understand. The planning board has to give you final. Normally, they give you preliminary, then you go to Akabor, and then you come back to the final.
On an individual lot?
Yeah.
Well, we've asked for.
Maybe they could, maybe you can ask for.
We did ask for preliminary and final. I mean, it's advertised as.
Maybe you can ask the board if they consider that. Give you final, but it's okay.
What, give them final, tell them to come back?
Well, you also have to, that landscaping plan has, according to the right-of-way, has to still be submitted to Rocket County Highway.
Yes, and we have to get a highway permit. That's correct.
But it should be, you know, we should see a landscaping plan here, since we do have the final approval of it, or not. Even though Akabor approves it, the planning board has final approval. I think it should have been included with the plans as we've reviewed so far.
Isn't that what Akabor's for, to review the landscape plan?
Yeah, but we have final approval, if you read the notes.
Yeah, but we have final approval. Mr. Mandell's right. And if the members of the board want to see it, then they request it. So, if, you know, we can pull the board, you can ask us to pull the board and see if we're willing to go to final without it, but just be prepared.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell. I'm sorry if I interrupted you. Okay, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this application?
What about the perk test?
I see none, and I hear none, so I need a motion to close the public portion. Mr. Mandell makes the motion, I need a second. Mr. Bond makes the second. All in favor?
I mean, I made the perk test before the map is signed.
Okay, so, what are we doing here?
Well, it's John and I were just discussing, maybe one, well, they could still get preliminary or continue, well, we're discussing if you were to at least address SECRE tonight, they could go for Akabor next week and come back in two weeks for a final. That will give an opportunity for them to give you the landscaping plan to see before you vote for final. And then, in terms of the perk test, you know, you certainly wouldn't be able to do it within that time, but, you know, maybe prior to the, either signing of the map or issuance of a building permit.
But we, okay, so, Mr. Mandell, are you looking, you're not looking to review the perk test yourself? You want to make sure that Bruce reviews it and then says it's okay, right? Yeah, but that's, okay, so.
Bruce usually is, and it's done during the period when it has rained, during the dry season.
All right, so what can we do here? Give them final, give them preliminary, let them.
And continue, continue for final till two weeks.
Yeah, okay, so, fine. Are we going, everybody's okay with that?
Fine.
Okay, so, I need a motion for.
Hold, hold.
Yeah.
Cheryl, do you have copies of the landscape plan that we submitted for Akabor?
Yeah, it's put straight in the office.
Oh. No, because they already advertised for final.
If I don't circulate it, I mean, it's, it requires normally for a post-circulation, it's continuance.
Right, continuance, that's right.
And then, for Akabor, and then I can put it on again as a continued item.
Continued for final, but.
What about neg deck?
I would do SECRE.
Okay. Okay, so then, we're going to rescind the motion for.
There was no motion on that.
There was no motion. Okay, so then I need a motion for neg deck.
Lead agency.
Lead agency first, yes. Okay, so, Mr. Bond makes the motion for lead agency, second. Mr. Warren, seconds, all in favor? Aye. And I need a motion for, Mr. Bond makes a motion for neg deck, I need a second. Mr. Mandell, seconds, all in favor? Okay. And I need, and then, so now you, we've established that, now you ask for a continuation.
Well, or you can continue it, the board can.
Oh, then we're going to continue this until the next meeting.
Continue it for two weeks, to the 26th. And you can get final. You go to Akabor, and then you can come back and get final.
And the only additional information you need to be submitted is the landscaping plan.
Right.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
And try to get in, so it's for project review next week.
If we can get it in tomorrow.
Yeah, I have it.
You have it? We just didn't see it. Okay? Okay, thanks. See you in two weeks.
Thank you.
So, it's July 26th, and you sign your change of plan, and we will send out the public file in order, letters, because we're saying that we need to be July 26th.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up is Lennon, PB number 17 dash 32. Okay, so, I'm assuming that everybody that's left, besides Mr. Kleiner, is here to listen to this, so we recommend that you come up. Oh, okay, sorry, Mr. Kleiner. I just know you're not an abutting property owner. So, if you want to hear, if you want to see what they're doing, we suggest that you come a little closer, but if you feel more comfortable in the back, you know, that's fine, too. But I'm just making this suggestion. Okay, Mr. Brenner, you're up.
Okay, my name is Donald Brenner. I'm the attorney for the applicant.
What's your name?
Brenner, B-R-E-N-N-E-R.
Attorney for the applicant for Independence Avenue, Ute, New York.
My engineer here is Jesse Cokely. He works with Mazer Engineering. We were before the planning board last meeting, there was some questions as to the design, and we asked for a continuation, which the board permitted. I met with Mr. Peters from the engineering department, I met with Mr. Giudello from the building department. We discussed the thoughts that were behind their letters. Mazer went back and re-engineered the project, which the engineer will speak to you about, and we kind of met the requirements of Mr. Peters and Mr. Giudello. I would like, maybe, Jesse, you'll tell the board exactly what you did and what changes were made.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. So, based on some of the comments and feedback that we got at the meeting two weeks ago, we provided a conceptual landscaping plan to kind of give the intent of what the screening will be along the western boundary, and then we also added some additional plantings along the limit of disturbance on the northern boundary for the residents to the north. We also provided a detail for the bio-retention plantings that was schematic. Obviously, we still are going to go to Akabor and seek their input on exact species and, you know, things like that, but we want to respond to the board's request, so you guys can get a feel for what we're thinking. One of the questions also that was there was why we had so many loading bays. So, we removed three of the loading bays, which helped us cut down on some of the impervious coverage, which was one of the comments made by Bruce Peters in his letter. We also had, the driveway on the west side of the site was 30 feet wide. We reduced that down to 26 feet wide. We would be willing to go further to 24, but I believe the fire chief wants to keep at 26, so that's as low as we can go there. We also had the comment from Bruce Peters and the board, the discussion about the watercoast diversion permit, and one of his concerns, and John echoed the similar sentiment, was to try to keep a portion of it in a vegetated swale. While we can't keep it in the exact location, we are going to remove a long portion, I think about almost 300 feet of the pipe that we previously had is going to come out, and we're going to replace that and put it with a vegetated swale, again, on the western side of the property. Even, it will almost be, you'll have the rail trail off our, you know, next to our property to the west, the screening, a row of screening, then you'll have the four-foot vegetated swale, and then it will be the actual property, like the road, and then the building beyond that. So, that was, those were the main changes to the plan. We, you know, it was two weeks ago, so we got a layout plan updated and a landscaping plan to kind of show those intents, and then a grading plan to show the swale being added as well. We also submitted a revised EAF to answer the questions raised by Mr. Mandell, and then we also put together kind of like, you know, an aerial exhibit. We submitted an 11-by-17 version. I have a larger one here, which kind of shows the extent of the development, as opposed to, like, in context with its distance and connection to Glen Shaw Street and ultimately Route 303. The emergency access only to the north, that's only going to be used by emergency personnel, fire, ambulance. Everyone that lives in the area can certainly understand, with the way that this project is accessed, 100% of the time by the applicant, will be from Glen Shaw Street, which has to cross the railroad. And anyone, everyone in the area knows, if you get stuck at that train, it could be quite a bit of time before you're actually allowed to cross. So, the emergency access is there strictly for fire, in case there's something to that effect, where that entrance, the main, the only entrance to the site, is closed, for whatever reason. Could be the train or something else, but it gives them another opportunity to come in, should there be an emergency. That's it. And then, I also provided kind of a much more updated narrative, which I think clarifies Lennon's choice, what we had put on the record last week, two weeks ago, excuse me, with their actual operation, the hours, the number of employees, the trip trucks, and things like that, and then also kind of put in writing exactly what our traffic expert testified to two weeks ago as well, so, which was, it supplements the report that was already done. So, I can go into more detail if the board has more questions, I'd be happy to, the public, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The PRC has no additional comments. From John Giudella, "The applicant has agreed to install a vegetated swale along the west property line and place the piping and drainage course. This is acceptable to the Office of Building Zoning Plan Administration Enforcement and the Department of Environmental Management and Engineering. Provided all other requirements are met, the applicant has a stream relocation approval from the Orange Town Town Board, which is acceptable for the vegetated swale installation." Bruce Peters. All of these are technical comments, they're all available in the back. There's 22.
He, there, most of them are almost identical to his previous letter, but number nine is the one that deals with that, the vegetated swale, and the change that we had made.
Okay, well, you satisfy it for him.
Yes.
Not negotiable. Everything else has been read into the record, and there's emails here from a Mr. Ryan McCormick. Mr. McCormick, are you in the audience? No, okay. Well, Mr. McCormick can watch the YouTube video of this, and everything will be explained of what, you know, basically, he's asking what's happening here. If he doesn't already know by now, then he can go back and watch my meeting last week, which was a real doozy, or he can watch it tonight, and he'll find out what's going on. Okay? So that's all I have, Cheryl? Mr. Young?
Yeah, I missed the meeting, I can't wait to see that on YouTube. This is a two-phase project, correct?
That is correct.
The hundred and eight thousand is what's proposed to go and be built? No guarantees, or no, on the second phase?
No.
To be determined?
To be determined.
What are you gonna do with the land in that time?
So we will, we will issue what I'll call an interim grading plan, that the applicant would use to just kind of grade out that area, even slope, grass, lawn, until it needed to be built, if it needs to be built.
Thank you. Thirty-eight feet on the height of the building, is that necessary?
I believe it is for their internal operations, with the height of the stacking of the pallets, et cetera, they have it that high.
It's a bit of an eyesore, thirty-eight feet, we've just had recent projects here come down from that height to twenty-eight feet.
No, we went from forty-three to thirty-eight, and we needed a variance, we don't need a height variance, yeah.
Pardon?
We don't need a height variance.
You don't need a height variance, I'm just...
No, we do not, and in that one, we went from forty-three to thirty-eight.
Just trying to get it out there in front of you, because I'm sure that train is coming. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Mr. Dell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mr. Young's concern about the height of the building. I know this has already been reviewed by this board, and I actually trust the collective wisdom usually of this board. I think many things on here are not problematic, one area that I do see as problematic, is the center of the north line of the property. It looks like you have a backup area for trucks?
Yes.
Okay. I think you could do a few things that would reduce the amount of clearing there, that would hopefully give these people a little bit more of a vegetative buffer. Right now, it looks like you're clearing about, I would guess about thirty feet, and I don't see why you could, you may be able to put in a small secondary wall for that short distance, but anything you could do to reduce that by at least fifteen to twenty feet, even though it may sound like a small number, will have a substantial positive impact upon the neighborhood.
We could certainly do that, we could certainly look into it.
Well, look at that, or do that, what, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I think it's doable, we can, we'll run, what we'll do is we'll take a truck turn template, and see what the maximum distance we need to actually back up is, if we can cut back on the amount of impervious in that area, we will bring it closer towards the building, away from the neighbors, or if we want to put in a small wall to reduce the clearing beyond it, if we need that much room, we can do that too.
All right, now, this is obviously just one member's concern.
Yes, and so what we'll ask you to do is, before, if, if the board so approves this tonight for preliminary, because you're not here for final, then you'll come back and you'll demonstrate whether or not it's possible, and why it's not, or it is.
Yes.
Okay?
I think we can do...
If you're willing to, if you're willing to do it, you know, that's the way it works.
Yes, I think we can come up with a solution, and if we are preliminary tonight, before final, we would definitely come back.
And if it's not, if, if, if it's even, it doesn't have to be exactly what Mr. Dell is saying, based on what you come up with, but if it's, if it, any improvement is what I think would be positive, but you'd have to demonstrate to us why you can't do what Mr. Dell is asking you, but what you can do, you could say, well, I can't do all of it, what you asked for, but we can do this, and we'll certainly look at that prior to final. Is that okay, Mr. Dell?
Yes, I think that's more than fair, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Dell.
Okay, the next thing, obviously, this is two hundred feet, the building from even the closest residential properties, but again, I also know you have the rail trail, but the rail trail dips down and comes back up. Are you planting any plantings along the rail trail?
It's not our property, but we are, in the landscaping plan that was submitted, we are basically doing them right along the property line.
Well, that's what I mean, I don't expect you to plant on town properties, but if you could put some sort of evergreens or something in there, that would give this people, these people relief, in the long term, I think that would be a positive addition to this plan.
In the package that was submitted, we do have a landscaping plan, it's gonna be sheet nine of sixteen in the set, plus you can see the plantings that are all along the western part of the, of the property, in between the rail trail and the building, and then we are also putting some more along that northern disturbances.
All right, my apologies, those two sheets were stuck together in my set.
That's okay.
Mr. Young just showed them to me, I think you're making an adequate effort, consider it. Obviously, we'd like to have this be forever woods, or whatever else people would want, you have the right to build something here, I do wish it could be less than thirty-eight, but I also understand why you have to have that type of building height in order to accomplish what you have. It would be better, I feel, just in general, if all the loading docks were on the rear side of the building, but again, this is a little far along in the process for that to be a factor, in view of the previous reviews made by this board. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dell, Mr. Bond?
I can basically concur with what Mr. Dell said in terms of, you know, the landscaping, and the shorting that turnaround.
Thank you, and one of my comments from the last meeting was that to make sure that, I'm, I'm assuming because you're planting along the rail trail, that that whole area is gonna be cleaned up, right?
Absolutely.
And that'll be a condition as well? Mr. Warren?
I think everything's been pretty well covered so far, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, Mr. Sweeney?
I just thank you for being very considerate of the comments in the last meeting, and I just look forward to hearing what the public has to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Mandel?
I just concur with the rest of the members of the board on your comments, and it was glad to see that you did take our comments into consideration, and the, and plantings along that thing should definitely make a difference, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandel, okay, so is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this, okay, so, we're gonna let you come up, you're gonna state your name and your address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
All right, my first question is, does this board ever turn down applications? Now, we know, you can answer afterwards, so I have my full three minutes. We know that this original approval was in two thousand and four, lots has happened since then, in terms of development of non-industrial property around that area, especially our road, Murphy Court, some of the highest taxpayer, tax costing, whatever, the highest value houses in the immediate area, are now being threatened by this development, and I think it's astonishing that you're all patting these guys on the back for doing a good job, so that's my statement, but I want to know, do you ever turn these things down? Second, and more importantly, in their application, is there anything legally binding them to the commitments that they're making in that application? My understanding is no, and so we have to go on the assumption that they're gonna run this factory twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-four days a year, just like Aloof does next door, and at all times of the day, as a two-hundred-foot barrier to my house, I can assure you that air brakes, people yelling on loading docks, will not be masked in any way by any amount of planting. So I want to know what we have to do to hold them to the obligations that they're making, that they'll never use North Troop as an access point, that they'll never run except eight to five, and they'll only have twenty to forty people on site, and they'll only have ten to fif- or twelve to fifteen trucks a day. So I don't believe that's possible to legislate that, so I'm concerned about what we're gonna do to hold them to those commitments. Finally, I just urge you to think about the impact, I don't know if the board knows this, the commission, but as of yesterday, there are three houses on Murphy Court that have gone up for sale, there's a fourth one coming up next week. Essentially, the whole, the whole street is moving, if this goes through, so there's a real human impact to the decision you're making here, that's way beyond, hey, good job, you followed our comments, and you're gonna build your industrial, you know, parkway behind our houses, so. It's very important, and it's not a laughing matter, and it's not a good job matter, it's threatening all of our way of life, and I think you need to take that into consideration, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna answer some of these things, because I take, first of all, yes, there are applications that come here and that are turned down. We, if the, if you were here at the last meeting, you understand that we asked a lot of questions, and we asked this applicant, who was trying to push this through without us doing our due diligence, so that's why we're saying that thank you, that you, you did come back to us, and, and we're allowed to do that, and I take offense that, you know, you think that this board up here, just, we, we just let them come in, and we, we just, we push them out, that's not the way it works, okay? The other thing, I want to warn, there's two things that you should realize, okay? First of all, the applicant has rights, okay, and the neighbors have rights, and we take both of those very seriously, but everybody has rights, okay? So to, to say that we're just pushing these through and, and patting them on the back is, is just an affront to the people who volunteer to come up here and work on this board, and quite frankly, I get a little tired of the people who don't come here every week and listen and see what we have to do to, to, to make those kind of comments. The other thing is, when you bought the house, and you bought the property, it's up to you to figure out where, what, what's behind your property, and what these people have the right to do. That's not our, our responsibility, okay? I live a hundred feet, in fact, I live right near Murphy Court, I know exactly where you are, I know exactly the houses, I live a hundred and ten feet from the railroad crossing, so I suffer, and, but I knew when I bought the house, that I was gonna be living next to the railroad crossing, okay? So if we're, you know, it's not our responsibility to tell everybody who's buying the houses on Murphy Court, that, hey, did you know that Aloof and everything else along 303 has the right to build up to this, this area? That's not our responsibility, that's your responsibility, and that's your, that's your, that's your, your real estate agent's responsibility to let you know that, so it's, we're sorry that, that, that this has happened, but like I said in the beginning, the applicant has rights, and the neighbors have rights, and our job here is to balance that out. As far as the other comment that you said about, do they have, do, what, what rights, as far as enforcing what we say? If they're not in compliance of what they're saying today, then you have the right to call the buildings department, they'll do an investigation, the same way they did it with Aloof, and they'll make a determination if they're in violation.
Nothing happened with Aloof.
I'm not, I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just telling you, that's how this whole thing started with Aloof, somebody said that they weren't doing the right thing, and the whole investigation started, is that correct? Is it that what happened, the smell started getting, okay, so then, that's, if you find that they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, you have the right to call the buildings department, they'll, then, they'll send somebody down, right? Okay, so you asked a question, I answered the question, I'm sorry if you don't agree with that, but that's the answer to the question, so who's next? Go ahead, your name and your address for the record, please.
Hey, how you doing, Ira Steinberg, ten Murphy Court. So, I had a recent conversation with someone from New Square, and I said, he goes, he knows I do land development, he does land development, I did land development in the past.
You have to speak into the microphone, we can't hear what you're saying.
Not a problem, so, I had a recent conversation with a guy from New Square, who said, hey, I know you do land development, I do land development, are you gonna build a house? I said, no, I like my house, I live over in Blarva, he knows I live in Blarva at Orangeburg, he said, oh, well, what's wrong with your house? I said, well, I have this company Aloof that, that smells in the community, he goes, I go, what, do you know the Rosenbergs? I know they're from Monty, he goes, yeah, I know the Rosenbergs, Joseph and Susan, I go, yeah, he goes, I go, you know, he goes, I go, why are they divorced? I go, they don't get divorced in your community, he goes, oh, well, they don't usually get divorced in our community, but she's a tough woman to deal with. And I'm thinking, I guess she is a tough woman to deal with, based on her interactions with most of the, the town, you know, so far, I've yet to see a Rosenberg show up to any of these hearings throughout the entire time. They haven't been at a town board meeting, ZBA meeting, when this was brewing between Aloof and the town, they didn't come once. When the town decided to spend, I think, fifteen or twenty-five thousand dollars for character testing, Aloof didn't elect to pay for the, you know, the bill, they had the town pay for the bill. They have not benefited the community at all, in one way, they have not, you know, donated to Little League, my son plays Orange Town Little League, they haven't donated to Little League, my daughter plays Palisades Little League, they haven't donated at all, they haven't given back to the community at all, all they did was benefit from being in this community, by having a multimillion dollar, you know, company, but they haven't benefited, you know, and benefited largely being in the community, but haven't given back to the community in one way. So my issue is, she, you know, the family of the Rosenberg town, your family has benefited largely being in this town for many years, and now they got this side property that they're asking for approval. If you prove it, obviously the land has value, if you don't approve it, it's just raw land, but if you prove it as value, and they're supposedly gonna sell it to another entity from Monty, so if you approve it, now they have big value to the land, but if you don't approve it, it has no value. So I don't understand why we should keep on benefiting the Rosenbergs, who've benefited from being in this town for years, and have yet to give back anything to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Anthony Lopafido, L-O-P-E-R-F-I-D-O. Thirty North Troop Road. I noticed on the, the handout tonight, something was added, or wasn't there from the last time that I noticed, it's saying fifty-seven North Troop Road slash Glen Shaw Street. My question would be, why is fifty-seven North Troop Road now being listed, whereas they keep saying that nothing's going to be affected by North Troop Road, or nothing's, so I don't know why it's even like amended, or is, is shown on here? That's a question, because last week they said, North Troop Road's not gonna be impacted at all, but now they're showing fifty-seven North Troop Road. They mentioned that they're gonna cut back on the number of trailer bays, down three, so that's gonna be fourteen? It still seems like a high number, if you're only gonna have four trucks per day coming in, if, let's say you, you have four coming in, you have four left over from the night before, that's eight. If you have two more added to for what-if scenarios, that's ten. I don't understand why fourteen is needed, on something that, again, if it's only gonna be a nine-to-five operation, and we talked about the, the busy time, that was still never really answered, of what the busy time is, how often are they gonna be running? If they're not allowed to enter the, the building after a certain time, where are the trucks gonna be? They're gonna be parked along 304, they're gonna be parked somewhere where there's, you know, they're out of the way, what happens if there was an accident on nine-nine-five, and they weren't able to get there on the location at six o'clock, and now it's pushed? You know, so it's all these things that are really concerning to myself, and again, like somebody else had mentioned, what happens if the company goes under? And six months later, they say, oh, you know what, we have to sell, it's not, oh, we'll sell it back to Aloof, now Aloof has fifteen more bays that are in their area. If they're, if they're separate from Aloof, I would suggest maybe have a completely separate entrance. Don't have, they, they said they're sharing the entrance to Aloof, make them build a complete separate entrance off Aloof property, and, and, and go there, show that you're separate, you keep saying that you're separate from Aloof, but you're not showing it that you're separate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Heather Hurley, two oh two Hobart Street in Pearl River, I don't think this was answered at the last meeting, but I was wondering why the loading bays need to be open and not enclosed, so if that could please be answered, and I also was just wondering about, Mr. Garvey, I know you had asked about the LLC entity disclosure law at the last meeting, and I was just wondering if the owners of Linen Choice have been identified, and how is it allowable that Linen Choice is not the applicant? I understand that the sale of the property has not gone through yet, but maybe Mr. Magrino could explain that, as to why Linen Choice people are not here, and why it's under Aloof real property and not under...
Okay, I, I, I'm gonna say something, is that it, Mrs. Hurley, I'm sorry if I cut you off, okay, I, there's no, I, I don't think in the disclosure law that says that they have to come, they just have to be told who, who, who it is, so, that, that should answer your question, there's no, and, so that, whether or not they come or they don't come, that's up to them, they could send, they could send counsel or engineers, they, it happens all the time, coming to the planning board, so. The, the law, which was passed by the town board, was to disclose who they actually are, who the LLCs or anybody else is, so that's, you know, that's, that really doesn't have anything to do with us, but as far as coming to this board, the applicant, the owner, they, there's no law that says that they have to come to us, so I just want to clear that up. However, I'm going to let Mr. Magrino, and if Mr. Brenner so chooses to answer the questions, before you do that, I just want to make sure, is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak to this? Okay, so there's none, so Mr. Magrino, you can go first.
Well, just with respect to the applicant, the owner of the property, is Aloof real property LLC?
Yes, which has absolutely nothing to do...
Right, so, I'll, I'll take care of it. Aloof, they're the owner of the property, they don't necessarily have to be the applicant, presumably there's a contract that, and is, again, is a common situation, that's contingent... Presumably, there's a contract that, and is, again, is a common situation, that's contingent upon Linen Choice getting approvals. So that's not an uncommon situation, that the applicant is not necessarily the owner. So, and I think you answered the question with respect to.
Yes.
People showing up, and maybe you can address the exact situation here in terms of, are they a contract vendee for the?
They're a contract purchaser, that's correct.
So they're, the property will be sold. Aloof is not going to own this property.
Aloof does not own it. It's an out-and-out sale, there's no leasing. It's an out-and-out sale.
Okay, anything else, any other questions?
And you've submitted a entity disclosure.
Yes, we submitted that, and first of all.
So, hold on, because you're, you're talking fast and there, there, people are not. So they, they submitted entity disclosure.
Yes, they did.
Okay, so that answers the question, Mrs. Hurley, or Ms. Hurley. Go ahead, Mr. Brenner.
Okay, I, I just want, first of all, just for Mr. Steinberg's information, Mrs. Rosenberg has absolutely nothing to do with this property. She has no ownership in the property nor anything of that sort. The people are selling it to people who are in no way related to Aloof or anything that have to do with Aloof. So just so we understand that, this is, is a contract purchaser who has a present operation in Hillsdale, in Hillburn, Hillburn, where he's now going to be moving here and expanding his operation. As related to the, to fifty-seven, the mention about Murphy Court and the second address, that was the cause of the post office, and that was the cause of the town records. Their address is done that way, but they cannot go through the residential streets, and that's the reason that the entrance goes across the railroad tracks to Route three oh three. We had to put that, change that because that's the post office address, and that's the address that's on the tax map. As related to a separate entrance, the board, when they put this together many, many years ago, does not want an entrance onto a residential street, and that's why all this property was designated to have an entrance onto Route three oh three, which is a commercial street. At one time, some vehicles were allowed on Mountain View Avenue. The board, again, stopped that from even using Mountain View Avenue. All commercial traffic must come through three oh three through Glenshaw Street. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner. I'm now, wait, I'm, I get to ask everybody their questions, right? I mean, isn't that, okay, you want, I'm sorry, Mr. Mandel, you can go ahead.
No, it's just, gentlemen, yes, about North Troop, that's where the emergency access road starts.
Yes, that's correct.
Has nothing to do, nobody's going to use it except the fire department.
Fire department and ambulance, they're the only ones that can use it.
North Troop through Murphy Court onto the property. That's the only reason it's mentioned.
That's correct.
Has nothing to do with any traffic going there.
There's never going to be anything but an emergency access, I guarantee you that.
And the, actually, the only other thing I'll address for those comments, at the conclusion, if this gets approval, there'll be a decision that has the conditions listed in there. The conditions can be include, certainly that that's emergency access only, it can include hours of operation, various items, and there's a catch-all provision there that whoever occupies or owns this must be in compliance. So I know it gets back to the situation you mentioned, but if it comes up that there's a situation that, you know, you certainly get a copy of the decision, hold on to it. If you see a, a situation where it's not being adhered to, it's up to the building code, building department to enforce it, so.
Okay, so I need a motion to close the public portion. Mr. Bond makes the motion second. Mr. Warren seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I need a motion for lead agency. Mr. Warren makes the motion for lead agency. Mr. Sweeney seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion for negative deck. Mr. Bond makes the motion. Mr. Warren seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so they're here for preliminary. So I need a motion for preliminary with, with conditions. Mr. Bond makes the motion for preliminary with conditions. John Giordello's one. Bruce Peters, twenty-two. No, they're the older ones. Booker Engineering's thirteen. Rocket County Highways, two. Rocket County Health, two. Rocket County Drainage, two. Michael Betman from the fire inspector, nine. And then correspondence from Rocket County Department of Health, Orange Town ZBA, Rocket County Highway, New York State DOT, not objecting to this board survey's lead agency.
Mr. Chairman, there's.
Just wait one second, please. Is that it, Cheryl?
Yeah.
Mr. Dell?
Yes, the, the turnaround area in, in the north end of the property is to be, the landscaping and grading in the area is to be re-studied to maintain as much of the original vegetation as possible.
Before final is granted, you'll come back.
Yes.
Also, the condition that the whole tire length of the property along the rail trail is cleaned up.
And then the, I, I mean, it's on there, but you might want to emphasize that the access to.
That access to the, to Troop, to Troop Road bordering on Murphy Court is for emergency vehicles only, fire department, ambulance, and police department. That's it. And hours of operation?
I believe we said eight to six.
On the latest narrative, they asked for eight to six.
Eight to six.
We can, we can add that as a map note, too.
Put it on the map.
And what about weekends?
No.
And no work on the weekends?
And you said, so eight to six is.
Eight to six.
Four months a year, it's not, there's no seasonal, there's no.
No, it's four months a year.
Eight AM to six PM, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Not eight AM to six AM.
Right, well, we just want to make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, before we pat anybody on the back. Okay.
Oh, I, I just, I'm going to ask, and I've asked this for this before, if you could even just take this first, what you're calling aerial exhibit, not this exact one, but you got to put a vicinity map on the front, the first thing, so that.
Yes.
Everybody can see what it is. This is, is, would be a good thing to take and put that there, but.
We can do that.
Not in picture form.
I also think that, what, what, we didn't say anything about the enclosed docks. What's the story with, with that?
Is it required for enclosed?
They have to go to the ZBA if you're not going to enclose them. Okay, so.
The, the planning board has a right to permit it. In other words, these, these, these docks as they come in right now, they're pressure docks and they're closed. They're, they're not open in any way. I think you saw that when we went before.
So they're closed, so then what's the story?
They're, they're outside, but they, when the truck comes in, they're closed. In other words, you don't hear any noise when the.
There's still external loading trucks.
They are external, that's correct.
So you'll have to go to the ZBA for the.
You have a right as far as second approval in the zone, in the LI zone. So for a second approval, you can approve external, if you so choose.
Or say no.
So put it inside.
Yeah, so put them inside.
It's your choice.
Well, well, do we, can we go to the ZBA? What are we doing that?
The requirement here is that they're inside.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll have to go to the ZBA with the board.
So you'll have to go for a variance.
Well, you have, as, if it gets the approval, it's inside.
Pardon me?
If it's getting the approval tonight, it's inside. If you want to do something other than that.
Yes, you'll have to go for a variance.
But you're going to need a variance.
But can I speak to the board on that?
You're going to need a variance.
You want to, what do you want to do, poll us?
No, no, I just, I just wanted to understand that when these vans come in, they are completely sealed. We explained that when we did the.
We got that, Mr. Brenner. The idea here is that the, the code calls for them to be enclosed. We're saying that they should be enclosed. If you want to change that, you'll go to the zoning board and ask for a variance.
Yeah, only the zoning board can do it. I take that back.
Oh, so we can anyway?
Yeah.
So there you go.
Okay, all right.
Even better. Can't be blamed. Oh, well, we will, we will be, but we shouldn't. What else? Is that it, Mr. Magrino? So, okay, so that, what happens now is they're not getting final. So if they want to open up the loading docks, then they have to go to the ZBA. They also have to go to Akaboor for the landscaping, and then they have to come back to us for final. So you'll be, you'll be notified of all of the meetings that they need to go to, and then you'll be notified when they're coming back for final.
It won't be until the fall.
What's that?
It won't be until the fall.
At this point, it will not be, they will not be back here before September.
We need a vote in a second.
Right, there won't be any of the meetings, so this is going to go on until.
Hold it.
Hold it.
Okay.
You're still going to make a government.
What's that?
I just want to take a little moment.
We need a session.
I know, I haven't, I'm not finished. I was just explaining everything, so I don't forget.
Isn't that yours?
Yeah, no, it's, it's the same as CS.
Yeah.
So you can do it, but you're.
Not inclined.
You're deciding. I just want to make it quick.
I'll, I'll take a, I'll take a poll. I'm not going to, I'm not running this whole show. Does anybody want them to open them up?
I mean, I can imagine they're not going to get the variance from the ZBA.
Okay, well, let them go, you know, so what.
How many, how many places in town have enclosed docks? There's not many.
Okay, well, there's one, there's one nay, and there's.
In the town of Orange Town, whether to be right or wrong, it's, it's a pretty standard measure, so.
And there's six.
I think they should be enclosed.
So the majority of the board wants them enclosed, so if you don't want them enclosed, you'll go to the ZBA for a variance. Okay, I need a second for preliminary. Mr. Sweeney seconds, all in favor? Aye, okay.
No.
Said no?
Yeah, I'll say the second.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was Sweeney. You sounded like. I wasn't looking.
He was talking on the phone.
Okay, so are, do we, are we clear?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, all right, so what's up?